Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
School district to order. Um, I have a pledge of allegiance. I think we'll have Mr. Terry lead the pledge of allegiance today.
Senator Tim, you may have to be on there. Maybe he can't get on.
United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So can especially non-board members mute themselves, please? We're getting a lot of chatter coming in. Do we have any adjustments for the agenda today?
Uh, Rick?
Yes?
Uh, yes, um, there's reports on the school opening, but there's no action item. We need to put that under new business. Probably an action item for opening the schools.
Okay.
Uh, Rick?
Yes?
I can't hear you.
We're getting a lot of feedback from somewhere.
Tara, I think you're not, you're not showing as muted.
So. So we can't, until the SU, you know, has an opportunity to look at the proposed reopening school plan and approves it or not approves it. Um, it wouldn't make sense to have the Rockingham Board approve something that hasn't been, the overall plan hasn't been approved yet. I mean, you could, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
Priscilla?
Um, I think it doesn't make any difference. I think we need to look at it because it's our schools and this is when we're meeting. So we need to definitely have it on there. So we have a good discussion and we have, know where our members want to go.
So we can have discussion under the, under the reports item, but what?
We need to have an action item too.
Why do we need an action item? Please explain.
Because we need to vote to see what we want to do. And that's what we were told was happening tonight. So it should be on there.
I was never told that was happening tonight.
Well, we were given the proposals to review so that we would, you know, so that we could, so.
So we'd be prepared to discuss them.
Yeah, I'd like an action item under, under number, uh, probably under the new business.
Approve something that hasn't been approved by the, the.
It's a matter whether WNSU approves it or not. We are a board and what we want to do should be, should be on there for, you know, so that we can at least tell the WNSU what we want.
Well, I think, isn't that what our SU representatives do at the SU meeting on Wednesday when we're?
But that's not, they don't have authority over our Rockingham boards.
No, but if we're.
We need to make a motion so that we know what we want and what, what should be happening from us.
One of the things that we agreed to during the merger items discussions was equity across all of our districts and within the SU. And I would think that we all want to try to stay on, on somewhat of the same plan. So I don't see an action. I'm not comfortable adding an action item at the last minute like this for something that is not even fleshed out yet. We haven't even had discussion about it. So I don't know that we need an action item over it. George?
Um, what if, um, after discussion, there was portions of the plan that maybe we decided, you know, we would want, want to change. I, I think that's kind of the bridge, um, that maybe Priscilla's getting to. If there was something that we thought was more beneficial to change before it getting to the SU, um, level or SU platform rather, um, would we have, um, authority to make suggestions or make changes?
So number eight is new business for discussion action, if any guidelines for in-person, uh, that's school board meeting. Sorry.
Yeah.
I was gonna say it could've come up there.
Rick, is that all the time that you're, you'd be spending on that tonight, if the SU board doesn't approve the overarching plan? The Rocking.
They have no authority over us.
We're interrupting again, Priscilla.
I apologize.
The, um, I know they don't have any of authority, but for instance, if the SU board.
We lost it, Chris.
You hear me now?
Yes.
If the Rockingham Board spends a considerable amount of time talking about a plan that might not even be adopted. That's my concern is, is the time that's going to be spent on something that has not been adopted. Because if the SU board turns around and says, no, we want all instruction to be out of school. Then all the time you guys spend talking about it tonight. I mean, you, I mean, you talk about the plan under, when it comes up, but I think making any final um, approvals of the plan or not would, wouldn't make much sense due to the SU hasn't approved the overall SU plan, whether they want to go with the hybrid model or not.
George?
Wouldn't that be, um, too late at that point for us to make decisions on behalf of our schools if, um, it's, you know, adopted by the SU and then at that point it would be beyond our, our, um, our control. Does that, does that sound correct?
Well, would it kind of, kind of in a way, the thing is that what, we all have to be doing the same thing. And so if the, because of that, you know, it has to be equitable across all of the districts in the SU. So, I mean, it wouldn't be late because technically, um, you know, once you get, once the SU approves or denies the SU plan, then you guys can call a board meeting to, um, go over the, the school plan, which is, can't be written without the SU plan.
Well, more importantly, I think to keep in mind here is if the SU's plan is different than our plan, then there's going to be transportation issues, food service issues, special education issues, which are all run and organized by the, the SU. So, you know, until we know what they, they're doing, we have a bit of a problem. Priscilla?
If we, we really need to go ahead and have a discussion so that we can at least let, and a, and a motion so that the SU knows what we want and what we're, what we think. And whether, whether it ends up being one plan or another, that's what it needs to be. As long as it's equitable in our schools, we are fine. And, and we need to be able to have that discussion and that motions to be able to do this and not. The WNSU does not control our district. We control our district.
They control all of our transportation, food services, special ed, and a bunch of other stuff that we would be in a hard time trying to figure out without George.
I understand what you just said, Rick, and I agree with that, uh, with this statement. My thought is that what's best for the high school might not be best for Saxon's River Elementary School. So there has to be able to be some flexibility in, um, some differences between them if decided so. I mean, I don't know that it is. It's, at this point, it's just principle and, and, um.
Chris?
I don't know. It seems like cart before the horse.
I think what people have to understand in this case, it's, it is what, you know, if the SU approves a hybrid plan, it's a hybrid plan for everyone. We can't offer something to one district in one school and not the other. It has to, that's where the equity comes in. For instance, if I said, okay, K through five through eight at the middle school is going to have all remote, but the sixth, the fifth and sixth graders at the other two schools within the SU are not, that's equitable. We can't do that. So it all does hinge on the SU. We cannot go in different directions on this. It had, we're very clear, state's been very clear. It's a, it's a one plan for the SU. You're not going to have, you know, four different plans. It has to be equitable for all the students.
Jason Terry?
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but Chris, I, I think you said we have to let the SU decide first and then we can kind of do it, but how would that work in reverse? So let's say the SU decides they want to do, uh, hybrid, but we don't. And like tonight, what if we want to decide? We want to do hybrid, but you're saying we can't because the SU has to decide first. So then if they decide that, uh, hybrid, we're not going to have a, have a voice. Is that correct?
Well, that's the, you know, the purpose of the SU board is to have those represented, representatives around there, make that decision. It's going to be a tough decision if it is for the SG boy because it's one of those times that we have to decide on a plan. And so, yeah, we can't have, I can't have, the SU decides hybrid, then the schools go hybrid. And you could, I think it's well worth having the conversation tonight and where this board stands. So the SU voting around the table can, um, weigh in on what they want and what they agree and what they don't agree with. But eventually the SU board's going to have to make that determination, whether it's what model that the, uh, the districts go with.
So can Priscilla make a motion that they have the discussion?
You know, I mean.
We need to make a motion because we need to know what, what we want our, our board members to do at that meeting too. So we do need that on there as an action item under number eight.
Yeah, you can, you can, those discussions, but I don't think you can, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying, no, do not have those discussions. What I'm saying is though, you can't vote to approve the school plan. You can vote to say, this is what we want for the members to go to the SU table and voice their, the voice of the board, but you cannot approve the school plan tonight because the SU plan not, has not been approved.
Priscilla?
We do not have to wait for the SU board to do anything. We are the Rockingham Board and we can have, um, we can do a motion and we can do instructing what we want to have happen. So therefore I would, I would ask that we go ahead and put that on there and that I think you've got at least three board members here that have talked about the fact that we would like it on there.
That's fine. So let me throw this back at you. You guys vote not to do the hybrid, the SU votes to do a hybrid is a huge problem because you need to be on the same page. All the boards do in this case. We can't offer two different models. We don't have the faculty and staff to do it, nor do we have the resources. So you guys can discuss it all you want. You guys can vote on it, but you know, the SU and all the boards have to come together and make one decision on the model. You can't have two, even two different models out there. And that's the fact that that's the state that you cannot, you're not have, you're not going to roll out two different models because then parents have every right to say, that's inequitable. We want what the Bellows Falls Rockingham Board has, or we want what the, um, what the, uh, Central School has. You can't do that. It has to be the same model. So you can discuss it all you want, but you can't move forward until one model is approved.
Jason, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, Chris, I understand what you're saying, but I, I thought there was, um, when these, uh, models came out, I thought it was, we were voting on this and then if we didn't like it, you'd have, somebody would have to go back and rewrite it to tailor, tailor that. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, it's, it's accurate. I mean, whatever the board decides, I mean, we're, we're, we're just proposing, you know, based on all the data we have, what the option is that we feel as educators in the, the task force should be rolling out in regards of program. The boards deny it, then we go back to it, but we, we're working from one plan. It's not multiple plans. It's one plan that we have to adopt.
I understand.
George, you had your hand up?
Just want to point out again that, um, the same model that may hold true for the high school may not hold true for elementary or middle school. Um, so yes, they're under the same district, but their needs and requirements may be, um, may be necessary to be different from each other. That's all. I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Jason Benson, you're out there. I'd like to hear from you if you've got anything to say.
Well, I think George Smith nailed it right on the head there is the, the learning curve is certainly different for high school versus grade school students. And they need the classroom time. They need the one-on-one with the teachers at this point. And I think a hybrid model could certainly sabotage education. That's my opinion on it.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get this on the agenda to, to have, be able to have a motion under eight. Uh, Rick, can you put that on there, please?
Mr. Terry, would you like to see some sort of an action item on here?
Yes, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
We will have a discussion. We will have, we will entertain a motion, but it will, I'm going to tell everyone that it will not be a binding motion. It will be an advisory motion.
What's the point?
You can't decide that.
I can decide whether we put it on there, Priscilla. Do you want to have an action item on there?
Yes, I want an action item on there, but.
But I don't believe it can be a binding motion unless, until we know what the SU is doing.
Why don't we move on? We can talk legalities, um, later.
Okay. So under eight, new business for discussion action, if any. We will have it as a discussion, act, possible action item for evaluation of the proposals. Review and approve board minutes. The, I believe the only ones we have are July 21st.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Motions are approved with no, no nay votes. Communications and public comments. Mr. Pratt, do we have anybody who wants to communicate or comment?
As of right now, I do not have anything in the chat room.
I see Jessa West Clark popped up. Is she trying to chat?
No, there's nothing in here.
Okay. Um, policies, I don't believe we have anything. Reports, superintendent, central office staff report, district updates.
I think most of our work at the SG level, um, we've been working on, um, proposing a plan. So, uh, I think that's going to take up a lot of the conversation tonight. Um, so, um, based on, like I put out earlier, based on the plan that you see, it's the, uh, the plan that, um, gathering all the information from all the task force, looking at all the data that from the various surveys that were sent out to parents. That's, we proposed the hybrid model. Um, to get into it just a little deeper, um, when we looked at that, when I looked at the data, we had almost, I think it was a little over 450 participants in the, um, survey that went out to families and parents in regards to if they had a choice, what would it be? And right now it's in within a couple, literally a couple, um, families in regards to it's either going to be all in school or hybrid. And I think, um, that's out of 446 responses and then about 90 of those responses wanted total remote. So what the public and I think the board has to understand is that with, if we had, um, all the students in schools, we would not be able to facilitate based on the social distancing. We would not be able to facilitate all the students in the building. And the, the biggest issue was at the middle school. That we wouldn't be able to have all the students in for, if we just had, um, instruction in schools and no hybrid or, um, remote learning. So that was one of the big factors had to take into consideration when looking at a plan. And that's why we went with the hybrid. And the other issue was, is that with the middle school, you have grades five through eight and you have, um, other schools in the SU who have K through sixth. Really came down to equity. Like you can't, you know, if we were going to say all in school, how could we do that for the other K six, like Westminster, Athens, Grafton, and not do it for the middle school? Um, and it caused it, you know, I truly believe that would cause additional problems for, for parents who have multiple kids in multiple buildings. You know, that's why we're proposing the hybrid model based on breaking it up alphabetically and also if there, if there are any families out there who have, um, living under the same roof, but they don't have the last name. We take that in consideration. We put them in the same cohort. Oh, um, so like I said, it's, it's the board's final, the, the, the. Like this is.
You're fading out again, Chris.
Is that better?
Yep.
So that's, that's the, the model that we're proposing is based on, on the data and, you know, what we, we see that we can accommodate under the cert, under the current, um, situation that we're in.
Questions for Mr. Pratt? Jason?
Uh, can, are we, can we talk about numbers that were, came out in our last, uh, last meeting that we had a few weeks ago, or you prepared to do that, Chris?
What, um, which numbers are you referring to, Jason?
Uh, sorry, uh, more specifically the audit that came out from RH Smith and Company. I had a couple of questions. Are we?
That can be under C for the financial report. Probably be a good place for that.
Oh, sorry. My bad.
That's okay. George?
Yeah, I had a handful of questions. Um, Mr. Pratt, how many, um, cases, how many siblings, sibling situations do we have? Across the, uh, across the district?
I know I have no idea how many, um, different siblings are, how many different schools.
All right. So, so that leads me into an, um, another question. Um, it is, in the plan, it says separating by alphabet. How is that going to look in a, let's say, uh, a fifth grade classroom? At any given time, is, is half of, half of the kids going to be in the classroom learning and then other, the other half are going to be remote learning? And with who will they be remote learning with?
Well, half of the kids will be, you know, it would be, it would be a half day for those students. The other students would be working on their remote learning and the, what they were given the, the, during their days while they were at school. And then it might be sometimes if, you know, the alphabet's broken up, you could have, you could have a class that's much smaller on an A day than you would at a B day. But when they're not in school, they're working on the materials and, and the assignments that they were, they, they had, um, when they were there for in-person instruction.
Okay. So, um, what kind of support are the online, the kids going to be looking, looking at?
Well, I'm, I mean, the, it's, it's more or less that they'll, they'd still be using their Google classrooms. For instance, on when, when the As are in school and the Bs are home, they have their assignments. They have what they're working on with, from their teachers, very similar to, you know, what they did when we were in, um, a responsive, you know, closure in the springtime. So the days that they're, the hybrid learning, we don't have the, um, enough faculty to give the hybrid instruction and the attention that you would typically have. That's why the days that they're not in the building, they have their assignments and the teachers know what they're working on. So when they come back in for their two days, that, that's there. They follow up with them and they work and they move on, get them, get them going for the next two days. And then on the Wednesdays, it'd be remote learning and teachers would be available. That would look more like it did similar to, um, the springtime when we're in closure.
Before I move on to another question, I got a couple. How, so like, again, how are kids who are working on their stuff at home, uh, going to get assistance? I mean,
They get their, they get.
Who are they going to reach out to? I mean, is there going to be some sort of classroom helpers?
Well, they're, they're working, they're working independently on the days with their homeworking and if they have questions, you know, we already have all the Google classroom set up where, you know, they can pose question, questions to teachers, but, um, for the most part, it's, it's like I said, the days of the not in school, like any of the hybrid models that we're seeing is that it's they're working independently on their assignments that they have, they're pulling from Google classroom. So we don't have the, um, capabilities of assigning a teacher to the remote learning and to the classroom. You know, like we, and you're not, so it's not going to look the same as it did when, in the springtime. So they're going to be, it's very, the days of not in school, it's, they're working on the assignments and the the learning that took place in the classroom.
Okay. And, um, so what about kids on, uh, IEPs and whatnot?
Those students on IEPs, if we looked at that, is that all depending the, the level of the IEP, there may be some kids who, um, need to be in the, in the building for days a week. And, um, they would be in the building four days a week. So, um, we can meet the needs of, of those students. And case managers will be checking in with, you know, with their, um, their students on a regular basis. So even if they're at home, they get the case managers following up with them because the case managers aren't teaching a class. So they'd be following up.
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to take some time to work, work out some of the kinks, but, um, those are, those are some concerns that I have. Uh, I had a couple more questions. If that's okay, if I hold the floor for a minute, is that all right? Uh, uh, what are the, um, I've read somewhere the guidelines, um, set forth by the AOE in regards to screen time. I think you kind of just answered that. That's not really going to be online teaching. It's just going to be working on their assignments, right? On the, on the off days. What is that, what is that screen time? Guideline, do you, you know, right off the top of your head?
Well, they have to 50%, I mean, it's, it all depends on the model that we're, that we ended up going, we end up going with. But, you know, we have to, whether they're um, in school or not, we still have to take attendance. So I'm not, I'm not too sure exactly. I mean,
Yeah.
how, how it all balances out, but we do need to take attendance each, each day and, you know, because we do have to follow up with assessments and benchmarking and everything like that.
Okay. So moving on, next question. Um, last year, I think there were still kids at the end of the year who had kind of connectivity issues. Are we sure that those kids are all going to be connected at some, in some way, shape or form, or if, if they do need some sort of assistance, um, on the off days that are, has that kind of been straightened out to some degree? Just thinking kids are going to get left behind and I don't really want, I don't want that.
I mean, I think your principals can answer that best, but I know that was one of the first things that we looked at during the, the springtime and shortly after is, is identifying the, the families that may have connectivity problems and worked out a solution. And I know that for Rockingham, um, all the principals are well aware who they are, if there are any at all.
All right, last, last one. Um, so in, in the plan, it said the first six weeks will be to acclimate students. And of course I'm sure there'll be some learning, but the big folks can be acclimating students. Well, if, if, um, the situation changes in the, in that six weeks and then the whole plan has to shift. Um, let's say it goes crazy and all of a sudden every kid's online or they're going to have after that, at some point, we're going to have to really get engaged in academics and, um, at, at that point, uh, would we be just be ready to, you know, get, get to it? Or, I mean, how are we going to ensure that if things change, we are just prolonging academics even longer?
No, it's, it, I mean, I think what we're, what we're saying is that we have to pay special attention to the social, emotional and create new routines for students. So we have to be cognizant of that and making sure that we're just not, okay, the kids are back, we're in school. That's it. Um, it's, it's going to be a balance and act for all of us in regards to, we want to keep the integrity of education, but also keep in mind of the social, emotional and establishing new routines for teachers and students. So it's not like learning is not taking place at all in those six weeks. We're just going to be hypersensitive in regards to, um, it, it, it is a transition period there.
I said, that was my last question, but I have one more if you don't mind. Um.
And the other part to that is that, you know, no matter what is decided on for a reopening plan, um, we have to constantly look at it and, um, take into consideration that it has to be fluid based on everything that's changing. And then on top of that, I would say that, um, if, I, I think it's going to, you know, if we do have to go into another reactive closure, we already have that model in place and, um, we've got, we've made adjustments to it since the springtime because, um, so we have that. So yes, we do have that plane in place that if we have to go in for closure, if it's a specific school, we close the school for 14 days. If, if there's a case, we close for 14 days, we clean it, get it going. And that meantime, those students at that particular school, um, you know, could affect other schools if it was, if it was from one family. Um, so, and they would go into the, the total hybrid learning for that particular school as how we did in the spring.
All right, one more question, Jason. Just give me a quick second. Um, um, so right now, it looks like we're about two to three fifths um of real academic instruction a week. Let's say this thing carries on for another year a- at this, at this um, the way that this is set up. At some point, you're gonna have, I know it's not high school, but you're gonna have seniors graduating high school with a sophomore academic um achievement rating. At, at what point, um, I don't even know if there's a question there, it's more of a statement, but I don't know, how, how long would we be willing to go, you know, this hybrid route before we make a change, either fully uh online or fully in person?
Yeah, I can't answer that. It's because everything's changing so fast. I mean, I have the same question, so.
George is all set. Mr. Terry?
Um, yeah, a few things. Uh, first, George, I think those are great questions. Thank you. Uh, Chris, I appreciate all the hard work you've done with this and everyone else who's helped you. And uh, I had a few questions. Um, on the analytics side of it, y- you were talking about the middle school quite a bit. What, what are the dimensions, like, did we look at for the task force, the dimensions for the classrooms and, and per student? And how many classrooms and, and things of that nature? I'd like to know some more of that information.
Yes, I did, Jason. Um, Mr. Quadro and I went through all the classrooms and measured them to see what the occupancy could be. The, the Bellas Falls Middle School does not have a standard-sized classroom. And so we had classrooms, some that could accommodate, you know, up to twelve, fifteen maybe at a stretch, eighteen, but I really wouldn't be comfortable with that. Um, and we had some classrooms that could accommodate five. So, and, yes, five, some of our smaller classrooms, looking at six feet of social distancing and maintaining still, you know, safe pathways through the classroom. So though, that was all taken into consideration and the additional piece in my, in that building is the air quality and the air conditioning piece, you know, the heat controls up on that fourth floor. So it, it's gonna be, just to have a hybrid model, it's gonna be very expensive to maintain those temperature controls. And Rick still hasn't been able to work out a lot of the finer details. Um, there's also, you know, the additional piece of, I, I don't have enough teachers to be able to man every single classroom if we're in a hybrid model and still be able to work within the confines of the collective bargaining unit.
Can, can you explain that a little bit further? The, the-
Sure. The collective bargaining unit piece?
Well, just the teachers and the collective bargaining, I just wanna-
Sure. So, you know, all the teachers are entitled to a duty-free lunch, they're entitled to certain prep. Um, you know, time and that. And in, in order to, if I had all my classrooms populated, every period of the day, because everybody'd be so spread out, I would not be able to meet that part of the collective bargaining unit. And that the teachers would have, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, a very strong argument under change of working conditions and an unsafe environment.
Yeah, that's accurate, Karen, because, you know, that's, that's part of the equity thing. It goes with teachers too, because we can't have um one school of teachers doing more work than another. And so we have to take that into consideration as well.
So I have a couple of questions on that. Um, have we thought about, well, first, if there's an issue with the fourth floor, when you say Rick, does that mean Rick Holloway needs to fix it or Rick?
Oh, Rick Schuman, the maintenance director.
And what, what are we waiting to fix that for? How long has that been not working?
There has never been air conditioning up on the fourth floor, Jason. Those classrooms get very warm. There's no air conditioning in any of the classrooms. On the fourth floor, those classrooms can get up into the high eighties on hot days and it takes days for them to cool down. The Vermont Health and Safety School says maintaining a temperature between sixty-eight and seventy-eight degrees in classrooms. Rick ordered some air conditioning units, he put them in a couple of classrooms as a trial, empty classrooms, and he could not get the temperature below eighty-five. And that's before students are in there. So, he's looked into a couple of other options. One is renting units for just the classrooms that we know we're going to have students in. And when I tell you this figure, you're gonna fall over. To rent you, to rent sufficient units possibly for one month to maintain that air quality, the quote he had was over twelve thousand dollars. And that's just in a hi- that's for a hybrid model, when I'm only using my larger classrooms, because those are the ones that will maintain social distancing.
So I, I, I don't think you were there, Karen, when we, when we built that school, so-
I was not.
I'm disappointed that the town voted to uh put a brand-new school, basically, and no air conditioning in it. That, that was a poor choice on our part, apparently. Um, so, what about, have we thought about moving some of the-
So, for the record, it's not just the middle school. I don't believe any of our schools have air conditioning anywhere.
I, I know a good HVAC company, just saying. Um, not gonna be smart, that's funny pants, but uh-
That's okay. I know V H V as well. They're pretty good guys.
Uh, that's funny. Uh, have we thought about moving students around to the middle school? If there's, if we, it seems like there's plenty of space at the, uh, sorry, at the high school. Have we thought about moving some of the students from the middle school to the high school?
It was a brief discussion. I know that Chris Pratt and I had, I don't know um if he spoke with um Principal Hodston about that. My concerns with that would be multiple, which was, the first would be, we'd be breaking up the sense of community of the middle school. It would be hard for them to have art, music, PE, et cetera, because those teachers, we'd be asking them to jump back and forth um throughout their day. Those are just, and you still, you run the issue again of cross-contaminating, you know, throughout buildings.
But it, but that high school was built for seven hundred plus students and it houses three hundred.
I, and Jason, that, that's not something that I'm aware of. Um, like I said, I know Mr. Pratt and I had a brief discussion about that, and I don't know if he talked to Chris Hodston about that or not, because I don't know the dynamics of how the high school is setting up their building for hybrid learning either. The hard part in this is the social distancing piece and maintaining that six feet and also wanting to give your students movement breaks and breaks where they get, you know, out of the mask, et cetera. Those are some of those tangi-, you know, tangible pieces that are hugely important for that social, emotional area, you know, and we've wrecked our heads, you know, trying to figure out how we can accommodate that. But, you know, the concerns still lie in terms of being able to safely and healthy open our schools for everybody. And, you know, I have over two hundred and fifty students. To have all of them and the staff in that building, you'd be talking over three hundred individuals.
And so, Jason, yes, I, I spoke to Chris Hodston and we took a walk around. Um, and they'd be able to accommodate the eighth graders, but it would be in the gym. And um, you know, the acoustics and even if you get back to the heat index that we're, we're talking about. They would, you know, based on the social distancing that we have of the, of the six feet, we could only accommodate the eighth graders if we had to. It wouldn't be ideal, but it could be done.
So I had a couple, just quick questions. Um, sorry to take up too much time. Uh, uh, Chris or Karen, maybe you can answer this. On page two of your plan, it says uh, band and chorus will be a limited basis per June seventeenth guidelines. Group activities with the potential to generate increased respiratory droplets should be avoided. This includes activities such as singing and music that involves woodwind or brass instruments. So are we limiting uh learning on, on band and music?
So music will be taught more as a music theory. And Mr. Sarani, the music teacher, uses a lot of applications on the Chromebooks for kids to identify and write music and things like that. So he's going to be limiting the singing portion. Mr. Rumril and I have had numerous discussions and we have to follow the guidelines about the woodwind and brass instruments. But he was talking about some rhythm activities and still be able to maintain um some of the cohesiveness of his advanced band at this time. But we do need to put that in there to show that we are adhering to the Vermont Safe and Healthy School Guidelines.
And then, uh, lastly, uh, under extracurricular, it says uh, at this time, the fall sports season, field hockey, soccer, cross-country are canceled due to health and safety concerns. What, what are the health and safety concerns at this time? If, if the V P A hasn't even uh announced that they're doing it, I, I don't understand.
So, again, um, we're talking about middle school athletics and the concerns are putting all of the field hockey players on a bus and sending them, you know, to another school where field hockey is not a sport that maintains social distancing. A decision needed to be made at some point, and I made that decision. Same with soccer. You know, cross-country is probably the closest sport you could have that has social distancing, but I couldn't just have one sport and not have the others. So the decision was made at that time that we were canceling the fall sports and other middle schools who were following and have done the same. So it was by becoming difficult to actually schedule games. Um, that's not something that, it's not a decision that was easy for me to make, Jason, you know. I, I'm, I'm an athletic person myself. And we are looking at having intramurals so that those students will still be able to practice those skills, etc., but they won't be able to do so going and competing against other schools. Um, you know, even look at Major League Baseball, as much as they've, as they've tried to keep themselves maintained in a pod, there are outbreaks left and right. And I do not want to be the school that sent my field hockey athletes off to another school. And then suddenly somebody at that school tested positive and I've got an outbreak through, you know, fifteen, eighteen girls. So that decision was not taken lightly, but it needed to be made so we could move forward with looking at an intramur- intramural program in conjunction with our A M after-school program.
I, I, I respect your opinion, Karen. Um, I, I do happen to disagree with it, especially with the athletics. I um, you know, that you, you can't compare Major League Baseball to field hockey with girls. Those Major League Baseball players did something that they should not have done uh by frequenting, you know, nightclubs and things of that nature. So it's, it's a little different between that. Um, but I, I do hear what you're saying. Um, and I, I think, I think, all in all, we just need to figure this out and come up with, these are challenging times and come up with different ways and different out-of-the-box thinking. Um, and uh, you know, again, I respect all of your, uh, everyone worked hard on this. But I, I think, uh, you know, a lot of families definitely want to um, you know, have their kids in school full-time. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, I, you know, I follow up with what um Karen had to say in regards to, I think just in general, the hybrid you're looking at. It's pretty much um majority of the districts and SUs in our state are going with a very similar, if not the same, type of hybrid plan that we have out there. Um, so like Karen said, you know, decisions that we're making here in this SU, we do have to take into consideration how it impacts um others surrounding SUs. That's why we're all trying to stay as closely with a plan as possible, because it does have that domino effect, even if you're in the next community over. So many people have kids who they may work, work in this community but live in Springfield or Bradavaro. So we're trying to take all that into consideration as well.
Priscilla?
Um, I did ask Karen last week, you know, if the numbers were, you know, um, and she could say that, that was held true, if the numbers were different. And we do not know what students, how many of them will definitely be there. And without knowing that, I don't think we can say it's overloaded. But the seventh and eighth graders or eighth graders, if, if you want to go, just eighth graders are at a different developmental level than our elementary students. Our elementary students are in need of much more direct instruction on a daily basis. Um, possibly your seventh, eighth graders and maybe just slightly your seventh graders could handle um and every other day. And we would be providing the same kind of um instruction for all students at that grade level and that developmental level if we had to do that. But not providing for elementary students is a big deal. I had a parent just today tell me that if they did two days of instruction, they weren't gonna bother to send their child, because the exposure was the same for that as it is for your five days. But if it was five days, they would put them in there because they know they were getting a really good education. Um, it surprised me because I hadn't thought about it that way until that parent said it to me. But I think it's a really big thing. And if you've got half of the parents telling you they need full-time and, you know, I think we're being really lax and not providing for our constituents. If we um just bow down to um just, you know, a couple of days in school and five days out of school. Um, because that does not provide an educational program for our children. It's really, really a lax thing. There's one other point I was gonna make, but I can't remember.
Anyone else?
We can discuss it later at the, at the action.
So, we'll move on to our next topic of reopening schools.
I got, I got a question. Hang on a minute, Rick.
Okay, George.
Um, I think I read somewhere, what did I read about uh when flu season comes around? It seems like-
That was under the Supervisor Union one, George. The, the, the proposal, uh, Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union. Page uh-
You know what I'm talking about? The, the part where it said, then the, then the weather, you know, gets into flu season and even if there are any COVID cases, we're likely not to um go into full-time at this um, you know, with this model if it's, if it's accepted. Um, is that, I don't know, maybe, Chris, maybe you could speak to that for, for a moment? Uh, your thoughts on that? I I feel like, I feel like we don't close schools for flu season usually, but maybe, you know, maybe there's some you know, idea behind it that, that, that would make sense to do that. I, I don't know. I, I just felt like it needed to be, I needed to bring it up.
Yeah, it was put in there more as cautionary that, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen with everything going on with flu season. And just if we did have to do something, this is one of the, this is one of the things that we may have to look at. A lot of people were wondering, you know, they wanted long-term. We really can't give any long-term. But I, we needed to include something in there, so something's better than nothing at this point. So nothing's written in stone. I think, you know, looking at these plans, we, you know, they're gonna have to revisit on a regular basis because everything keeps changing. So that was just a cautionary kind of, hey, you know, you, you might have to take this into consideration as well.
I'm here, Rick.
We all done with Mr. Pratt for now on this topic?
For now.
So, let's move on to the principals. I think we've heard quite a bit from Ms. Bukowski. Do we, have, do we, would the elementary principals like to update us on their plans?
Sure. This is Laura. I'd be happy to. Um, do you want me to share my screen? I, I know you all received it, but you tell me what would be most helpful, Rick. I can give a brief overview or what you're thinking. What's your pleasure?
Um, sharing your screen is fine.
Okay. Let me, oh, Chris, you'd have to let me do that.
I just need to switch up the settings.
Okay. There we go.
You should be able to try now, Laura.
Yep. Can you all see?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, I sent this to you all on Friday and um you probably saw lots of similarities between all three schools' plans. So I'm not gonna uh read bullet by bullet, because I'm sure you've done that already. Um, but my task force and I met uh several times to develop this and using the framework that um Chris provided. So as George pointed out, I think it was George anyway, earlier, um, the first six weeks, of course, we're going to be doing academics, but we also want to pay attention to uh those social, emotional skills, not having had the students in person for a while. So that is um definitely in our plan. Um, and uh we do have a full-time school counselor and a- And we do have a full-time school counselor and a part-time, I believe it's going to be two days a week, school-based clinician to help support students' emotional, social emotional needs. Let's see, point out some, I'll just scroll down to some, some of the highlights here. So the next section under academic specials, recess and gatherings. Again, we're talking about six weeks because as Chris mentioned, things are continually changing. So this is a plan for just those six weeks and continuing with our assessment tools as we usually do in the fall and determining where students are so that we can best meet their needs. We do plan to have outdoor learning opportunities as much as possible. We've ordered some tents so that we can have outdoor classrooms. And we also plan to connect with families prior to the start of the school year via Zoom, and that'll probably be by classroom, just to keep the group small. In thinking about specials, and this is our current thinking at this point, we wanted to make sure both groups had an opportunity to access specials. So I worked with Carrie, and because we share art and music, we were easily able to change their their past schedules so that both A and B had a art and a music class a week, as well as our P teacher was willing to change her days and be flexible there so that both groups would have P E. And then our school counselor will provide the social emotional learning as she has done with weekly lessons to both groups as well. We were thinking that students could travel to art and music as opposed to have it in their classroom. I had discussed this with Chris and some of the other elementary principals and other schools are doing different things based on their building. But we thought having that extra movement and our maintenance person said that he could clean in between classes, but so that's our current thinking around that. Specific to recess, obviously getting kids moving as much as possible. Of course, we would provide our usual recess and the equipment would be cleaned in between, and students could use, take off their masks, as Karen had mentioned already. This would be a time. But also making sure, you know, in an elementary school setting, we always have movement breaks anyway, but just being hypersensitive to the fact that students will need to move and then using the outside as much as we possibly can. This next piece is just, a lot of this stuff, you can tell, you know, is directly from the SU proposal as well. So let's see, scroll down. Karen had mentioned the middle school. So Saxons River Elementary School, for those folks that have had students there or gone through there, you also know that it can get quite sticky. And Rick is working to, you know, on those air quality issues. We do not have air conditioning. We do have fans. That was, I think, Chris, that was one of your first suggestions when I was hired. Make sure you buy fans because it gets hot there. So we are planning to get air purifiers for the health office and isolation room. But the the air quality piece has not yet been figured out, as as far as I know. I've been in constant contact with Rick, and I know he's working hard to do that, but a solution has not yet been found. Let's see. Oh, this is something that we talked about as a task force, that we were planning to create a short video to share with families, much like we posted videos through dismissal. But this would be like a short video that families could watch with their students. So what does it look like? You know, when I come to school, what's going to happen? And just kind of role-playing that scenario, just so students can see see some of the staff and and the expectations around that. We're going to call it the three Ws, just because having an acronym and teaching and modeling and reinforcing something that's catchy is very effective. So that's our plan there. Let's see, of course, all the hand sanitizers, school nurse is a very important part of our plan, working very closely with her. And of course, she is on our task force. We are going to limit the items students bring back and forth because, as you know, elementary students love to share, and we usually welcome such things, but we are going to limit that. This is nothing new, breakfast and lunch in the classrooms. We did break out arrival and dismissal because we have families that come by car, families that come by bus, and then students who walk to school. So just bulging that out for parents and what the expectations are and what that kind of will look like. We tried to look at it from a parent's perspective and when we were creating this document and what questions they might have, while also not creating a book for them to read through too. And then we thought it would be important just to have a bulleted list of what are the the basic expectations. And so we put that in there for for families as well. I will say, George, I think it was you that had the question about the learning expectations. I'll stop sharing here. The number of minutes, screen time?
Yeah.
We talked about that as an elementary principals group today, and we haven't brought it to the SU level yet, but we were thinking that it would be similar to the expectation during dismissal. So for grades four through six, it was 120 minutes, and two through three was, I think it was 90 minutes. Kindergarten was an hour. K one was an hour. So similar to what, similar to that model. Any questions?
Jason?
As I said, I have one question. You think for the Saxons River School that it's more important to have schools, the kids in school, full-time for your grade level on a daily basis compared to the high school, let's say, as far as the the foundation and building blocks of of the getting going on learning compared to high school? If I'm asking that question correctly?
I think I think I understand what you're saying. First and foremost, I think, you know, health and safety is paramount, so that is most important. I will say, you know, obviously, smaller students, younger students are less independent. So it requires a true partnership with families, which we, you know, I talked about all through dismissal and how lucky we were at Saxons River to have developed those partnerships with families because we can't put a, give a kindergartner an iPad and say, okay, do an hour's worth of work. It just doesn't make sense. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
They're just, it's just that they're different groups of students with different needs and different levels of independence.
Thank you.
Just made my earlier point. Thank you.
There's one other thing that nobody's even stopped to think about, and that is, okay, it's Monday morning and it's my time to go to school and I'm a first grader. And oh, I've got a stomach ache and I'm sick today. I'm sick Monday and I'm sick Tuesday. There goes my week. I could have been there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in a regular full-time. Here comes Monday, Tuesday, again the next week. Uh-oh, I am vomiting this morning. I can't go to school today. Look at what's happening to these poor children. We have gone, we could go weeks without having any kind of instruction for them. And if we don't have them there and give them that opportunity for a full-time program. And I know that at Central and at Saxons River, it was measured, and both of those could accommodate the full-time students. And chances are, some of those are not going to come anyway. I've also had parents, like I mentioned, one that told me if it wasn't full-time, they weren't going with a hybrid. However, I've had parents also tell me that if it was either hybrid or full-time, they weren't going and they were going to homeschool. So, you know, I just think we need to get in there and be providing this, which is one thing the governor told us and in, or one of the people, I think it might have been French, on Friday, was that we need to get in there and provide structure and schedules and a full program so that we could allay these fears that are out there and in a 0% COVID environment. We have no recognized COVID since mid-May in any of our districts, and that person happened to be a person that lives in Westminster, but she was identified Rockingham because her address was Rockingham. So look at what our communities have in them and make our decisions based on that. And Laura, you've done a great job. Don't get me wrong, but I just think.
I can speak more to the measuring of classrooms because I did that with Gary and Bert. And given our class sizes, all the grades could fit in their classrooms. It was very tight, meaning no extra furniture of any sort. It was just the desks spaced out with the exception of third grade, and that would have had to have been moved completely into a different room, a bigger room. But again, we're talking about, this is, this would be just desks only in the room and maybe a small table for a small group instruction. That was our hope. So it was a very tight fit.
George?
Chris, this is probably more of a question for you, but what, and I think I read it somewhere, I just wanted you to say for everybody, everybody here, what is the level that was that is mandated by the state that we that we return to school? I think that I think I saw it was level two. Is that right?
Yeah, right now, we're in the except for, except for bus transportation is, you know.
So at that point, level two, meaning it's a state mandate that it's some sort of a hybrid version?
No, they're not, the state, the state says, you know, there is no mandate on any version. It's just a matter of whatever the boards, you know, want to do. The problem is that we will, you know, most supervisory unions were well underway in creating the plan and having their task force working and compiling all the data from a task force and what we can do, what we can't do. And then the, you know, a week and a half ago, the, it was put out there, and you know, it was an oversight, I think, across the board from everyone and said, look, the boards, one, have the final decision, the ultimate say on what model you're going to use, whether it's hybrid, 100% in, 100% out. And two, once they decide, they approve the final plan as well. So, no, the state didn't say you have to do one or the other. They said you have three choices. Boards, you have to decide what choice you want to do. And so, you know, from compiling all the information we got from task force and everything else, you know, and what all, what majority of the other SUs in our area are doing, you know, a hybrid right now is what we're proposing. I mean, we're not tied to anything right now. It's, you know, that's, that's a board decision.
But just to clarify, one of our limiting factors is social distancing spacing at at the middle school. Is that accurate?
Yes. Yeah, just, just, I think just in general, it's, it's, it's the social distancing that is limiting how many people we can put in the building, but also we have to take into consideration the heat index in all the rooms. Because the more kids you have in there, you know, the the hotter it's going to get, and we got to keep it between 68 and 72. So we get, we're trying to keep that in mind, too. And so if we have the hybrid, we have lesser kids in the building, it's, it's going to help more than in just one way, but.
Is is this heat 68 to 72? Is this, or whatever it is, is this something new related to the the COVID return?
No, this was put, yeah, this was put into the guidance on June 17th.
So it's not something that's been for years because we've had kids in these classrooms for a long time?
No, I mean, that was something.
Times of year, so.
No, it's not, it's not anything new.
Jason Terry?
Rick, that was my question. I was trying to remember when I was in high school, it was so hot in high school, you put your arm on a paper, a paper picker right up with you, and I didn't know if that was something new that, you know, we're all of a sudden scared of the heat now. So Chris, can I just ask you a question? What is your preference?
My preference, my preference is going to be, I don't know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a tough question. I mean, my preference is that we do whatever's going to be best for keeping the kids and the community safe, bottom line, whether it's hybrid, whether it's all out or all in. I think the toughest thing right here, I see that I find doing this is that we need to get kids learning again, but at what cost?
And what costs the other way if we don't get them in school full-time? Let's say 20 years from now, what is the, what are the effects if we go all hybrid and kids are missing three days of school? What, what, how much farther are we going to fall behind as a society 15 years from now?
Yeah, exactly. And for me, it's one of these things, like, none of us have been through this before. And we're trying to create something on the fly, and it's changing constantly. It's just, I mean, I know I don't have any answers. The task force, I mean, it's a major undertaking to try to do something with with what we're looking at. I mean, because no matter, we talked, we talked, I mean, I think everyone has their own perspective in regards to how they want this to play out. And I feel for the community, I feel for everyone, because there is not going to be one solution that's going to make everyone happy. We're not even going to come close. You could decide to do all in school, and based on what I'm seeing for data, I mean, there are too many different dynamics out there. We're not going to be able to meet everyone's needs as best as we try. And I think that's the frustrating part, that I don't, you know, what, what are we going to do? We need to move forward, but we do, we do need to take into consideration the dynamics of all the different families and the concerns that everyone has, and they're all different.
So Ms. Carrie, would we like to move on to you?
Sure. So I would just like to echo a lot of what Laura had said for Central. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the new principal of Central Elementary. And I will just say, adding on to it personally, one of the features coming into the district new this week is the possibility of a hybrid model. Massachusetts, where I'm coming from, isn't even anywhere near that point. And the fact that there are so few incidents of COVID here is a possible, you know, plus. But at the same time, it's very real, and it's summer vacation right now. So what hasn't been identified yet is very real to come out in the next month. So going cautiously into this, I absolutely support the hybrid model where I know and I understand and feel for parents being back to work. But in most other states, it's not even going to be an in-person model. It's going to be a, you know, an online model for many, many places. And that's what Massachusetts is really struggling with right now because they don't even have the numbers. I mean, I had 32 kids in some of my classes. There's no way to, you know, socially distance that number. Right now, I have 20, and as it is, third graders, they do have desks, but it's very difficult to get 20 third graders in one room right now socially distanced, you know, meeting CDC and state guidelines, that I see very difficult. And that's to mention the fact that, you know, even if they are going somewhere, they're going to be in the hallways, they're going to be going to the bathrooms and things. We're trying to not have, you know, lunch in the cafeteria, but it is still going to be, even with the hybrid half-model, going to be challenging, and we can do it. But it's, you know, I think having full student group right now is is really not all of the way they want to go and things, too. So I mean, it's something to take into consideration because the model right now, in a few more weeks, that may change very much. So we have to plan for this because we're, even though, you know, it starts in a month, Vermont could look very different in a month. You know, I've seen a lot of license plates. I'm an essential person in my hotel right now, but there's a lot of license plates on the state that I've seen that are not essential employees, based on the families that I've seen, too. So I think that needs to be factored into the plan right now, is we're planning for something, and it's hard to say, you know, what it could look like in a month. But I think that we need to be cautious, and I think parents will have a better understanding once we vote and decide where we're going, because then they can take that into consideration for employment. But I certainly understand, there's no good answer anyway, I think, across the board. But this is not something unique to Vermont. It's not something unique to the, you know, Supervisor Union. This is across the country, across the world. So I mean, this is not something that, you know, our students would only be the ones behind. In fact, they may be further ahead than other states because that wouldn't even consider the hybrid model. Just putting that out there.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Kennedy? Jason?
Hi, how are you? Welcome aboard. So I just want to caution you, you've lived here for five minutes. I've lived here for 20 years, and I'm still trying to fit in here. So you don't want to get labeled right away. Give it some time before you get labeled, I guess. You don't want to get labeled right away. Give it some time before you get labeled, I guess, with the Massachusetts stuff, so.
I absolutely get that.
So I wanted to ask you the same question I asked Ms. Hazard.
Okay.
Your gut, you think it's better to have a good foundation of kindergartners and first graders going to school five days a week compared to high school students to get a good foundation?
Are, I mean, it's very difficult to say COVID times or not COVID times. Obviously in an ideal world, yes, everybody would be in school all day long. However, right now I think that this hybrid model is something that'll work to support the in-person face-to-face communication with students and the student building the rapport with the teacher. But then at the same time, you know, still having the online platform, we still have interventionists, we still have some other ways to support students. And it actually could be a very, you know, ideal situation to get very small differentiation happening in the classrooms. And I think that could really benefit the students to have such a small group of students to work with. You know, and I think that they could gain a lot more in academics on the days that they're in person. And then the days that there's, you know, we're working remotely, they'll have an opportunity to be supported with the teacher. And then obviously on, you know, office hours for the teacher and then with other interventionists, they're still going to be supported.
So I also have heard that you've been doing a really good job. And I, for one, as a parent and a taxpayer, appreciate how, how quickly you jumped in and rolled up your sleeves and got right to work. And that's, uh, that says something about your character. So I appreciate it. I just want to, again, as Priscilla said, I want to tell everyone, we have the lowest COVID in the entire nation. So.
And that's something to be celebrated. Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate the support.
Anyone else for Ms. Kennedy? Let's move on. Yes, Priscilla?
Um, again, though, we still don't know the numbers at any of the schools. And with not knowing the numbers, when we do that, I really think we're going, we would be fine with the numbers and finding out before we put away and cut it back to that. Because as was pointed out, two days in the classroom is not going to provide. And a check-in on the remote day, which is what happened a lot of times on the remote days, is not going to provide a full education for our children and they deserve more from us. There's other things that can be considered by the superintendent and.
So Priscilla, I'm going to, Priscilla, let me interrupt and, and thank you. You, you, you just keep repeating the same things. And I think that we've heard it. And I think we'd all like to kind of move on to some of the other topics. We'll be revisiting this under your action item again. So.
Thanks, Rick.
Um, business office and financial reports? Chris? Is Ms. Pagan with us today? Is Chris still with us?
He's there. He's just muted.
Mr. Pratt?
He went off to have dinner.
Okay. Well, I'll be back in 45 minutes. George, you're not smiling. Lynn? Can you help us out?
Um, as far as the financial reports go, I, I really, I really can't. I, um, I don't know where we are. I know on the 17th, um, our new, our new business manager Flora and I, Pagan is coming on. I honestly don't have, I don't know if you got your financials for this meeting or not, but I, I can't.
All right. I'm sure Chris will be back in a minute.
I'm back.
Okay.
Technical difficulties. Um, Teresa is joining us right now and so she can, uh, she can chime in on any questions we have in regards to the, the business office. So just give her a minute to get uploaded. Come on, Teresa, um.
Oh, sure. Dr. Carey is having dinner.
So Teresa, if, um, if you want to chime in on any questions that the board might have on finances, audit stuff?
Yep. Sorry, I got disconnected, lost my internet.
Me too.
Um, so did you have question? I'm sorry. If you had something, I'm totally missed it because I just got logged back in.
Uh, I don't think we have any questions yet. There was some questions about the, the audit funding that was out. I know Jason Terry had a question. So Jason, why don't you ask your question?
Well, I got a couple of questions. Teresa, I'm looking at page, uh, page three under the Rockingham School District Expense Revision Daily Status.
Okay.
So unbanned, banned supplies, the budget, correct me if I'm wrong, was $900 and we spent 5,191. Do we know what that was for?
Um, I can look that up. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly do. Right now I can look that up while we're on Zoom and I can get right back to you on that.
Sure. I got some more for you while you're looking them up. Is this, this report a rolling 12 or just one month?
I'd know this is a rolling.
Okay.
Inclusive, it's not completely inclusive. Just like I said, we're still wrapping down. With everything that happened this year, you know, I'm still racing the clock to tie up loose ends and everything else. And I have less than, I have about a week and a half to have it done before the AWE starts pulling data.
Okay. But then just a couple of other questions.
Kids and staff, we could have COVID right away if.
Priscilla, please mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I wasn't. Sorry about that.
It's okay, Priscilla.
Apologize. I can't get it to mute.
Teresa, what, on this, uh, daily status report, what do you think the areas of opportunity are?
Oh, are you talking about so far where we might have some surplus or something?
No.
No?
I expect the good. I want to know what to do, what the ban is so we can fix it.
Well, right now, I mean, the biggest thing I don't, there might be some expenditures related to, um, I was going to say the special ed and everything else, things, assessment costs are really the biggest thing right now that I don't have a solid number on the assessment because it all depends on the finalizing of, because I know that the, as I mentioned before, and it still keeps getting pushed to the back burner is the substitutes, because all the subs got moved to being paid one paycheck, not 20 paychecks anymore from very, all the districts. So I have to do that bill back. So that's part of, you know, with the assessment things from the supervisory union until I totally lock that in, um, I don't have a solid number saying, okay, this, this is what I have. But there's nothing for expenditures right now other than the assessments that are sticking out saying, okay, we have this, because there's some things that are getting paid and have been paid this last time around too. But the encumbrance field, I haven't been able to clear just yet because of the fact that, um, when the rollover happened in the, in the procedures that were given to us, we were told that, oh, if you do this, it's going to end up doubling your expenditure stuff. Don't do it. Hold off, I give you the instructions. So I kind of held off, but I'm at the point that I'm just going to have to journal entry to fix it because the expenditures, the encumbrances now, some of them are truly realized as true expenditures. And I want to get a real feel for what purchase orders are still out there. Uh, because everybody's done a pretty good job about cleaning up and saying, okay, you can close this one or we're not going to pay anything more on that one. So just close it out. But we still have some lingering ones, but like I said, there's nothing, right now, there's nothing that's sticking out to me going, this is just a red flag.
Okay. So you're.
That's what your question is, sorry.
On the ban thing?
Yep.
That, that looked out for me. And then on page 80, on the, um, who's this auditing company? Uh, RHR Smith, the last meeting that we were at?
That's, that's our, um, yes, the auditing, they, they finished all the FY19 audits. We're all done and everything else. Um.
It says, um, uh, what was it? Deficiencies, uh, audit process, those identified units, employees were not in compliance with contracts issued. Um, can you tell me about the deficiencies for the, the two deficiencies that were pretty good? I would, I'd like to understand a lot of those.
The comment about the contract part had more to do, and it's my understanding from them when we, um, and the superintendent, assistant superintendent, we all had a meeting with one of the auditors. And the way she explained it, 90% of it was more so with the, um, the grants and everything else and the way that the contracts were and how, how they were done last year originally and everything else. And I don't know if it's just the way things were put in the system too, but either way, um, the, what we had, were told was basically that if a contract says you start, you know, July 1st, then don't work on June 30th. Um, that there were certain things like that, but, um.
Yeah, it talks about implement internal control processes and procedures. Do we have those in place now to, uh, make sure that doesn't happen? Like, do we have a time clock, for example?
Yeah. Yeah, Jason, I can answer that. We, um, everything that was in there, we've already started and put in place and it's all underway. I am having the auditors come to the, um, at the end of the month of August, the SU board meeting. So if there are more specific questions in regards to whether it's the Rockingham audit or the SU audit that they can discuss. But one of the things before they even gave us the final audit, and I believe I shared it with most of the board members is that I had to respond in regards to how these things are going to be remedied and taken care of. So.
Yeah, I see that. That's page 81, what your action plan was going to be. So I, I just want to make sure that go, you know, we've got a lot going on, right? So I just want to make sure that going forward that, you know, we, I, I realize this 2019, but we don't have the same thing happen again next year to us. I mean.
Right. And true. And, and with FY20, because of everything that kind of, um, the little perfect storm, um, as some have put it, but with everything that's happened, clearly we had to address issues as, as they happened and everything too. And now we're at a situation where not one person is completely doing the human resource and the payroll side and everything else and reconciling certain other things. Um, that some task is now involving three separate people because if that's the only way we can balance and check all each other. But for the most part, there's a lot of balance and checking going on between human resource and payroll to hopefully, you know, not have any recurrence and, and get the system set up correctly. Because I can tell you that without having things set up the way they should have been, it has created a nightmare. It's been a lot of fixing. And if we can get ourselves off on the right foot, and that's why I've been pushing about making sure that we wrap the financials up the, the way we need to and the way they're supposed to. Otherwise, we're just going to be putting ourselves in a bad situation again. And I really don't want to go down that road.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Teresa? Did everyone get the information about the, um, audit funding today? Priscilla?
I, I did, but I wasn't quite sure how that entered into the fact that the 202,600, and I think it's 658, whatever the number was, 586, one of those numbers, was, said that it was reimbursement for the audit to the WNESU. So I guess, um, we eventually need to have a breakdown of those figures, if those figures are not all going to the audit, because right now your warrant that you signed, Rick, says that.
It wasn't for the audit, but it was based on adjustments based on the audit. And they were, they were part of the assessments that again, from the supervisory union and the billback and the expenditures that were allocated, um, to the different school districts based on certain, again, based on certain expenditures related to that. But I, I don't, I didn't actually see the warrant and I didn't actually see what was typed in, you know, when the, when the voucher was created to be paid. So whether it's just a bad way of having it worded or whatever, but that was truly not for, that, that $200,000, you're talking about 856.81 cents is strictly FY19 assessment expenditures that were due and not anything to do with, it was not an audit expense at all.
So you'll break those down for us at some time?
I, I, I actually I can. I, I mean, the best thing I could do is probably send you the copy of the spreadsheet that actually breaks it down by the functions and stuff that the auditor gave to me that told me, you know, told me how I needed to break out that expenditure and everything else. But I'm not going to, it's no sense of me recreating the wheel as opposed to I can provide that document.
Yeah, whatever makes it easy.
Any other questions for Teresa?
I have one more, Rick, if I can.
Sure.
Um, I, I'm not sure where to ask this question. So it's a numbers-based question. So I figured here. I wanted to talk about transportation and, um, the cost of that. Or would that be under committees, which is next? Uh, and then do we have to provide it? You know, those sort of things.
The transportation is taken, handled it by the SU. We could discuss what our portion of the cost is, but there's, the, but that's a different question. Is do we have to provide it as, as well? So.
I can, I can wait till Wednesday then.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, but as the SU, the SU handles all the transportation and then we, you know, that part of the assessment, I'm sure that we were just discussing is our contribution to transportation.
And there is a, sorry, there's a special transportation worksheet. Um, I haven't obviously worked with myself at this point, but Edie has shown it to me. So I know, I guess it was something years ago that was, um, designed or whatever to come up with the, the proper or the, the fairness, I guess, allocation. So that particular spreadsheet is what determines the transportation share.
Yes. In addition to that, Jason, just to answer your question, so you don't have to wait until Wednesday. In state of remark, um, school districts do not have to provide transportation.
Good to know. So maybe we can add that if, if, let's just hypothetically, on Wednesday, we say, go back to the drawing board, please, Mr. Pratt. Uh, maybe that's something you could, uh, if there's only five people taking a bus, let's just say, you know, maybe they can figure out how to get to school. I, I don't, I don't know. Just asking a question. Thank you.
Maybe another part of that question is whether the Rockingham can, you know, as we talk, talk about, you know, like going back to Priscilla earlier, are we, are, are we destined to, to stick with what the SU decides? Not that I'm, not that I'm suggesting we cancel our buses, but at this point, but it is, there, we, that's an interesting topic, not just on the bus, but how everything that, that is managed at the SU level rolls back to the Rockingham Board, because I have been having some debates with an SU board member about, you know, Rockingham versus the SU and who's in charge of what and who makes the decisions for who. So I would like to continue that discussion at some point myself with the, the Rockingham Board, Mr. Pratt.
Yeah, Rick, just to add in there, we, we do rely heavily on transportation nowadays for food, food deliveries. So that all plays into it in this day and age.
Yep. Um, SU board negotiations update, there's not much to update at this point. Not really anything to update at this point. Committees, do we have any active committees?
Now, we have a few committee meetings coming up. We have a policy committee coming up, um, this week. Um, to just, I don't know if we're really reviewing policies, but just getting up to speed in regards to, um, some legal language in regards to certain things. So that's all we have coming up. Committees, I believe, and the task force and the reopening school committees continue to meet.
Okay. Priscilla?
Yeah, I was on the task force committee. I was on the academic resource and, um, uh, extracurricular activity committee, and I was also in the social emotional committee. Um, the academic one had gone with recommending three half days when we were doing, going back in August and then full-time, um, after Labor Day. So that was where they were at and they had a whole lot of the things that are in there that our principals covered in their thing. The social emotional too was interested in, um, doing, you know, a, a little slower opening there at the beginning, but getting the students back in. So I heard that from both committees that I was on. So I was kind of surprised that we're at the point we're at tonight, but anyway, that's where we were at. Thanks.
Okay. Unfinished business for discussion. Unfinished business for discussion or action. Food service account update, seventy-one thousand to be moved to WNESU account. Who would like to speak to that?
Teresa, do you wanna respond to that in regards to next steps and what we're doing?
I, yes, I, well, I, I guess I should back up when I say yes, because I'm not clear at this point where we're at with this, because I know that I have presented the information. I know that it was voted on to go ahead and move it, but then it was also voted that Rockingham should at least have some say in moving it. And so I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not clear on what else I need to provide, even though all the documentation was provided prior. Um, and the only other, like I said, the only other documentation or um. Would, well, the documentation speaks for itself. That's, that's the best I can do. And the auditors have it in their audit reports listing that food service account because it's still sitting there. So we have to account for the cash and everything else. So it's still part of the Rockingham financials, but it's not funds that ever have sat inside the general fund or anything like that. It's a, sitting as its own account because like we said over and over, is that a school district had to be the host for the food service program and at the time, Rockingham. So when the program and Cafe Services contract broke up, the SU became the host, the primary, and, but those funds were sitting there. And they've been sitting there and until a lot of those stuff happened this last year in the audits, you know, some things I didn't even know existed until yeah, you're going through the audit and you're like, well, you know, where did that come from? So like I said, all the, all the research showed that the funds that are sitting there now are from reimbursements from the food service program from the state for lunches and stuff like that.
Yeah, and it's my understanding, you know, from those documentations that you provided and also what's in the audit, you know, that, that shows that Rockingham, you know, because the concern was, how do we know it's not Rockingham money? So that documentation between the two should be enough to show that to the Rockingham School Board, it, it, they're not taking Rockingham money and putting it into a, a food account.
Correct. And that's where I thought we were at when we had, because I originally think that I presented it to the Wyndham um, board, just because my mind thinks, you know, supervisory union, food service at that level and not thinking Rockingham. And I think that that's how we originally got to, okay, let's put it before the Rockingham School Board, just verify that because it is the, it belonged to your financials, that you have, you know, that you have say and vote just to know that we're all on the same page. So I think that that's where it was left. And I'm just, if there's something else I need to provide, I just need a little direction on what else you're looking for um, at, at this point.
Jason?
I think Priscilla had her hand up first.
Priscilla?
One thing bothers me that she just said, and that is it was reimbursement for money that Rockingham spent. If it's reimbursement for money that we spent, then it does go to Rockingham. And that's why we asked her for the history to go back and see what she could find on the history. That's what we're lacking and what we haven't gotten. And maybe it does go that way, but what we wanted to do was see.
But that's the documentation that I gave you is that showed the back history and everything else that showed that those funds were received and everything else. And when it's reimbursement, it wasn't just because Rockingham, it, it wasn't the sense that Rockingham's had expenditures, but um. I guess I'm not. I, I guess I can sit here and present what, what I know, but seeing how I wasn't here at the time and the documentation that I was able to produce, it's, if it's not what you want, then maybe the auditors have something that I don't, because they've been around longer than I have.
Well, I think looking at it, I mean, between what Teresa provided, breaking it down in the auditors, you know, the auditors, you know, agreed that this is what we should be doing. And, you know, I don't think the auditors are gonna, you know, give Teresa or myself saying, oh yeah, I moved this money away from Rockingham. We know it's theirs, but put it someplace else. I mean, everything that Teresa has provided and what the auditors are saying, it, that's the information we need and it shows you where the, the money trail is and that it's food services and it's not Rockingham's money, but we had, they had to go into Rockingham's account because they had to be designated through that entity.
Jason?
Just real simple. Is it our money? Yes or no?
No.
Sorry. Because if it is our money, we can afford, based on Karen's, uh, or somebody said twelve thousand dollars for air conditioning, we can afford five
A month.
Five point nine two air conditioners.
A month? Twelve thousand a month, she said, to, to rent the unit.
For one month.
A- anyway, I'm just, sorry, I don't mean to be flip. If it's our money, I'd like to keep it at the Rockingham. That's all.
I mean, I guess at this point, the only thing I can say is I will, I, I honestly to give, I will go back one more time and see what else I can dig up. But if the expenditures, I mean, I guess if I go back and find that there's no way that the other school districts ever kicked in any funding or they never paid Rockingham their share of whatever expenditures, um, then that would be a point to make. But at the same time, if Rockingham spent five hundred thousand, but I'm just making this number up, but then the state and reimbursements came back to that amount, then it's not, it was never an expenditure to Rockingham. It was full reimbursement. But like I said, I, I will go back and dig up. If, if this is where we're at, then I will go find out what I can.
Thank you.
George, Jason Benson, do either of you want to chime in on this? Are you, George and Jason Benson still with us?
They're both muted.
Yeah, I was muted, sorry. Um, I don't really have anything to say, but I think Jason and Terry um asked the appropriate question, is it our money or not? And that's it. It's a yes or no.
Right, and that's.
Now, I don't, I don't know. I'm just, that's, that's the question.
That's, that's the question that, you know, that I asked when we very, when this topic very first came up is, you know, if there's money that has Rockingham's name on it. Um, you know, I know Westminster had their own food service program. I'm not sure who else was on Cafe Service. I think that there's part of a history here. Um. I would be very happy if someone were to reach out to Chris Kibbie and ask him if he knows about this, because he probably knows how all this played out in some way. Um. So I think the SU was expecting some sort of a motion or vote from us on this to approve them transferring those funds. I don't know how much longer we can hold them off from doing that.
So Teresa, let me ask Teresa, Teresa, it, it's, it's, we can say, you know, based on the information we have and what the auditor showing us is that it's, it's not Rockingham's money, correct?
That is correct. That's, that's based on all the research I did and based on the conversations with the auditors and the, um, based on the advice from them to move it into the general fund, not, excuse me, move it into the supervisory union food service program. Um, that was the advisory and everything else. And so that's um. Like I said, that's, that's my belief. But if, if everybody's that uncomfortable, the best, the best I can do is go back and see how far back I can go to, to prove, um, you know, without a reasonable doubt.
Well, I mean, I, I just think, you know, with everything going on, I mean, we provided the information and the, the auditors have, you know, also um weighed in on this and it's, they asked a question if it was their money and from all legal circumstances, it's not Rockingham's money. So um, I, I don't see you going back and regenerating the same information.
He's getting bigger. Juliana. Yep, eight years old.
I might want to mute Jason.
Jason Benson?
Yeah, you're right. I might want to mute. I unmuted, so I'd be ready.
Priscilla?
I guess I would like her to go back because that's what she was asked to do at the, at the last one. And I know, I know it's easier just to listen to the auditor. She's been really busy and I know she's, she's right out straight. But to go back and see that history, I also like your point of asking Chris Kibbie if he has any information on it. I just would feel more comfortable. I mean, it's of course up to all the board members, but from my standpoint, I'd feel more comfortable.
Okay, for the record, I just want, this is the third time I'm going back. So technically, I went back after you asked me the last time, the first time you asked me. So I presented with all the other detailed information. So just want to be on the record about that. This is the third time.
How far back did you go? Teresa?
I went back into the spring of FY eighteen.
But what's the money from before that?
Program was still running. The, the food service program was still running then. And then if you could see the, the trail of the funds when it's almost depleted and then again, where funds were received and funds were spent. Cafe Services, the August of twenty nineteen was paid their two hundred thousand dollars or whatever, kind of buying out their last contract payoff thing. And so again, at that point, there was very little left in it. And then there were some deposits and I don't even know why there was a deposit made in March of twenty nineteen, which I can't figure out because in March of twenty nineteen, the deposit that was made into the account. Um, and nobody in the office seemed to have an answer as to why it happened or who knows who did it, which makes no sense. But well, the word is the prior accountant, because it's always the person who left. Um, but the money was deposited in that March of twenty nineteen. And at that time, Rockingham wasn't even running a food service program. It was in the supervisory union. So that's why I said that, that amount right there, no doubt in my mind. I, I can't justify that it would belong to Rockingham if it was a deposit from reimbursement from the state for food uh reimbursements. And it was done in March of twenty nineteen.
And how much was that for?
Um, I don't have that right in front of me. I'm sorry. I didn't have the documents. I can, I can definitely bring the documents up and get that number for you.
Okay. Is, is there any reason that we can't, Rick, put this off till the next meeting? And so that we can have that information?
We can.
With uh, you know, I'm, I'm good with it going back to the supervisory union. I, I think there's more important things that we need to focus on. Um, it's not like we don't know where, where they live, if it's really our money, uh, so to speak. Um, so maybe we should just board on it and just move forward. I'm not sure.
If someone wants to make a motion to, to give the release of the Rockinghams from the Rockingham School Board to the administrative office to release the funds and the, the, however we want to term it, the seventy-one thousand dollars in question.
I'd, I'd like to make that motion.
So we don't need a second discussion? No discussion?
I guess I, I guess I'd rather table that till the next meeting, because if we vote a- and we vote it down, then we voted against it. And I'd really rather give it a full chance of, at this point, I, I couldn't vote that way, but maybe next meeting I could vote that way. So.
Um. I don't. Since, since Teresa's given the information three times, if the, if this board decides that they don't want to, then everyone can vote no. So unless there's any further discussion, Jason, Terry?
I vote to uh sense the auditors, uh, and not just Teresa, but the auditors also verified, I vote to move the funds to the supervisory union.
Priscilla?
No.
George Smith?
Obstand.
Jason Benson?
Hi.
So that's two to two, damn it. Um, I'm gonna vote in favor of transferring the funds, because I think that, you know, Teresa has, you know, we're talking about saving money. Pretty soon, we're gonna start spending this money on having Teresa do research and another audit, and it just goes on and on. So um, one vote from the chair to break the tie, I guess. New business for discussion or action, if any. Guidelines for in-person school board meetings. So. Where do we want to start this? I know that some board members and so, and I know people in the public would like to see us start meeting in person again. For me, this is really convenient. Um, I'm not gonna deny that, that it's very nice to like be at home with my family, log on to a meeting, finish up the meeting and eat dinner without driving home. It's fifteen, twenty minutes, but it's it's still, still nice. So that is, that is my initial statement. George?
Yeah, I, I, I think to clarify um the perception, you kind of just said it, it's, it's turned into a convenience. Um, has nothing to do, me, for me personally, has absolutely nothing to do with um any safety worry or anything like that. That being said, um right out of high school, I worked for somebody who told me they'd never ask me to do something. I wouldn't do my, wouldn't do themselves. So I think it is important that we at least um, if we're asking kids to go back to school, be masked up, whatever the case may be, and I hate masks, I'll be the first one to tell you. But if we're asking them to do it, I think it would be um a, a, a show of um I think.
Solidarity?
Yeah, well, I mean, really, we, we should anyway. I'd rather argue around a table than not on a computer. So so that's my feeling on it. We should, the next meeting, I, I believe it should be in person, anybody who's able and not at any type of risk, I think, I think we should do it.
Jason Terry?
Yeah, I, I agree with George. I think that George and I have said several times over the last couple of months that uh in-person is the way to go. I think it's very hypocritical of us to hide behind a camera when I am all in favor and have been in favor of meeting in person. Um, I would like to meet Priscilla. You know, and, and Jason Benson. Uh, you know, I've been on the board now for several months and this is all I see. So I am willing and able to meet in person, and I think it's the right thing to do.
Jason Benson?
Yeah, I, I fully agree that it's time for us to uh get together as a board and meet in person and hash out our negotiations around the table and meet everybody that we haven't met. I think I've met everyone except Jason Terry at this point, but no, it's time, it's time.
Priscilla?
I'm very willing to do that. We just have to work out the logistics because the um supervisory union m- m- meeting room where we've met before isn't large enough for us to follow the guidelines that we're supposed to follow, them asking our students to follow. So we need to do like maybe an auditorium at the high school and an auditorium at the middle school. Um, a larger space because we also have to plan on additional people coming. We have our three principals, we have our superintendent, we have the five board members, and then we also have people from the public. So, yeah, but as long as we plan and we do a good job, I think we should, yeah, definitely. I
You could do a hybrid.
Asking our students to, and so I definitely.
George?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, whatever we're requiring them to do, we should do. And also, I think you just said it, um, it should also uh, maybe we don't want to have other folks joining us, but maybe join us on Zoom so it can be you know, still open to the public, but um not necessarily in person for everybody. Or, or we can let them in. I mean, I really don't care. I'm just, it might just be an easier, if, if we're letting people in, we're gonna have to limit numbers if, I mean, not that it's gonna get added and I'm sure, but um, anyway.
We've had a lot more visit, we've had a lot more people visiting us since we've gone to Zoom than we ever had.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Before. So um, I think that, you know, one of the things that we do need to take into consideration is how many people we are letting into a building at a time. You know, I understand we have low rates and we want to keep it that way, but you know, every, every person that walks into a building is, you know, is a person at risk.
Can I also state that in all of our plans, we're not having visitors or parents in our buildings? So um, a concern that I would have So, um, a concern that I would have is if you were to do it like in my auditorium, we're opening up the building to members of the public when we will not do that during the course of a school day. And it's specifically in our plans that we shouldn't be doing that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. I think it should, you know, if we meet together, let's meet together. But, um, whatever the school, proposed school guidelines are, I think we should abide by those fully.
I, I propose that we meet at Priscilla's property. I hear she's got like 17 acres.
Not interested.
You're welcome. You're welcome to come. You have, you can meet outside and spread out and.
But that is a, that is a, that is a question, question that I did have for Chris is, or if anyone else is aware, what are the, the guidelines around meeting spaces? Does it have to be? Does it, does it have to be within one of the schools or, or a facility owned by the district or can we do?
No, it, it doesn't have to be. We just have to make sure that it's publicized that we've changed the meeting location from, um, when we initially voted on it.
And, and what about the idea of, of say a hybrid where the board members and the administration perhaps gets together or whoever is, is willing and able gets together and then the public is welcome via Zoom. And anybody who can't is welcome via Zoom so that we stay set up for all options.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of comments in the, in the group chat there that, that state that, that even though we may be in person, it's, it's a convenience for other people to tune in as well that may not be able to make in person. So I think, I think that should continue.
I mean, I could hook up a camera. I have a camera for these purposes that, um, I could just put it on the board and still publish the Zoom meeting through the computer. So we could do a hybrid piece of that where board and administration, um, meet and the rest of the public could still log on and watch the meeting.
Cause I, I, I think that in the supervisory union conference room, if it was just the board members, that there is room, there is room to social distance and wear masks in there that would not be the same risk level as meeting in one of our schools.
Well, the, that we're, we're not going to be able to have board meetings there because we had to move some space around. So now we have the early intervention services take up a third of that room. So it went, it's spread out. So, um, I would say, you know, to, as, as, as a school board, we probably have to, you know, find a, a location. I mean, if it's just us, one of the schools, you know, would work, but we, I mean,
So.
Typically we said, you know, in the plan, because it's still just a plan, we said we wouldn't have any, um, public meetings in the schools. So we couldn't invite public, but we could do the hybrid piece.
So there's, there's also the, and I don't know with what they have for internet access there. The, the Christ Church in Saxon's River basement is not a church anymore. So it's a public entity. I believe they will allow up to 12 people in the basement there. Um, it's easy to get a camera and everything set up so that we could, so if this is something we'd like to try to move ahead with, with some sort of a, uh, at, at least a hybrid plan, which maybe, you know, means the, at least the board members and/or possibly some administration if possible, but we'll at least stick to the board members as a, as a starting place for now. We'll take it like the schools. We'll take it slow. We'll start out and maybe start out with us board members trying to find a place. Um, Jason Terry?
Can we get the superintendent to, um, task him with finding a place for us?
Um, you know, I think with everything else going on, I was thinking that perhaps we could task ourselves with finding a place because all of us, you know, Jason Terry and I are probably the shortest members here with me being only 17 years and him only being 20 years having lived here. But I bet we have a little bit better connections and know of places, you know, options and possibilities than, than Mr. Pratt is, is going to find. So I was going to suggest that perhaps George, Jason and I.
Yep.
Um, well, not three of us communicating at the same time because that'd be an open meeting law violation, but we can, we can kind of chat a little bit. You guys can send me some suggestions and, uh, maybe reach out to some places where we think might be possible that has the infrastructure for us to do a.
Did a wonderful job at the, uh, football field of graduation, 100 yards, 120 yards actually.
Uh huh. Yeah, as long as it's not raining.
It's just water, Rick. Come on.
I melt.
We're going to have the kids walk to school in the rain. I'm willing to send.
Main part of the meeting.
Do they have, um, the infrastructure though? Can we, can we do a Zoom so that everyone will be able to see? And, you know, I know with Priscilla often sitting on her deck, sometimes the wind noise and stuff can be an issue. So those are things we'll have to work out, but I think we will make every attempt to try to have a in-person board meeting for our next meeting.
Sounds good.
I don't think we need a motion or a vote or anything on that. Just agreement. If anyone wants to make a motion, we will, that we will make every attempt to, but. Moving right along. Priscilla's request to have some discussion here about the reopening plan.
Rick?
Yes.
I move to direct the superintendent to provide in-person instruction in full-time every day to students in Rockingham schools, beginning the second week of school.
I second that.
Discussion?
I, I missed, I missed it. What was that? Can you repeat that again? I was glitched out.
I move to direct the superintendent to provide in-person instruction in full-time every day to students in Rockingham schools, beginning the second week of school.
Jason seconded it. So it's discussion. George?
Well, also can I speak to the motion?
Sure.
Okay. In line with the level of viral transmission in the school and community is what the governor has told us and what the, um, secretary of education has told us. It's different in different school districts. It's should be applicable for developmental stages and account for diversity of, of youth. Um, the proposed program did not do that. This would provide for our children to be in there. It would not exclude from school unless local health mandates or medical needs. And he said the goal was to be physically present in school and the hybrid model that's being proposed right now does not do that because it provides for basically two days of instruction and a check-in on the third day. And then the, the other four days, there will be almost nothing because we know, as a teacher, I know how well students do homework and how well it does. There will be some wonderful parents that will work and do that, but there'll be others that do not. We have parents that will not send theirs, whether it's a hybrid or a full-time. We have, I know as of today, anyway, we have some that will not send it if they're hybrid because they feel that they're exposed anyway. So they might as well at least get the benefits of a full education. And we are tasked as a board to provide education. We are not providing education if we do it the other way. Social emotional comes first and we've got to take, address that the first days, but that first week does that. It gets them in gradually every other. Uh, I guess it's two days and two days. Um, they get their mask, they learn their techniques, they learn their structure. At least if it's five days after that, we have the structure that the, the people at the state are telling us our kids need. And yes, we have zero COVID at this point. And yes, we can end up with some COVID in our district because normally it comes from parents who are working outside and we're coming down and then it's transmitted to children. The statistics tell us it's not the other way. So if that happens, then of course we need to revisit it. But to not open with the beautiful weather that is a possibility at this time of year, with the tents that have been provided, you know, mentioned at Saxon's River and hopefully maybe for Central School and those. I think we need to find out the numbers before we do anything different. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any teachers, uh, tuned in here? How do they, how does, any teachers feel like speaking up? How do, how do the teachers feel about?
Well, I, I have something in the chat and, you know, any teacher can feel free to, um, unmute their mic, but right now it says, um, in the chat says, Priscilla, if it's the goal, why are we starting with it and not working towards it? Teachers are tasked with providing an education, not becoming infectious disease experts. So.
Is that a teacher, Chris?
I believe so. I only have.
I'm not understanding. What was the question they asked me?
If goal.
The goal is to start with it, but we are getting the children adjusted like, like the task force said the first few days. And then we're instantly, yes, the second week after four days, we're going to, you know, full-time so that we don't waste those other two through six weeks that by being two days in school and, and your first grader not learning to read because they don't have the continuity.
Uh, Rick, I would, I would suggest that any, um, teachers that are on the meeting right now, if they wanted to speak that they could, but I'll leave that, that's a void.
Yep. No, I would be happy to hear from any teacher within our district.
Uh, this is G D Hodson. I'm the school nurse at the middle school.
Even better.
Hi. So, um, I have to let the board know that, um, we had a, um, very intense task force. We split up into subcommittees. We looked at data. Uh, we looked at different models. Um, there are so many new things here, um, that we have not done before. I feel like the hybrid model is the best way to, um, ease into this in a safe manner. Um, the kids are getting some in, in, uh, person instruction. And, you know, the, the health and safety has to come first. Um, I, we are blessed in this state that we do not have the outbreaks that they do in other parts, but, um, you know, to take it slow and see how it happens. This is proposed for six weeks. It's going to tell us a lot. We're going to gather a lot of data in that time. And, you know, I just think it's with all the new procedure that these kids are going to have to learn, um, to be safe and to keep teachers safe and to keep their families safe. I think that the hybrid model, um, as proposed is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodson. Anyone else out there? I know there's one teacher here who says she strongly disagrees that no child's social life is nearly as important as her own, her son's, et cetera.
Rick, I can chime in if you'd like. It's Christie Jackson.
Great. Thank you.
Um, obviously as a teacher, I feel very strongly in support of public schools, public education. But I think health and safety has to come first and there's just so much we don't know. And it's, it's causing a lot of anxiety amongst our teachers and I just feel I absolutely understand where Priscilla's coming from and her perspective of, well, if the child gets a stomach bug and they miss their two days and maybe we don't see them for a couple of weeks. And I agree, that's a valid concern. But I don't think that's the end all be all. And I think their overall health is much more important than their academics for a year or a year and a half. And socially, I don't think this is going to be the haven or the Mecca that a lot of people are envisioning. When we can't even have collaborative learning, I just don't see this being as, I don't think it's going to be as great for the children's social development as a lot of people might believe. That's just my opinion. Obviously it's speculation, but I just think health is so much more important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie.
Um, hi, I can chime in also. I, hi, I'm Olivia. I'm the ELL teacher, the English language learner teacher throughout the district. I work in four different schools at the moment and that is without any new students coming into the district. Um, I would just like to mirror what Christie and Jean have already said is that teachers have a lot of anxiety about going back and not the anxiety just for themselves, but for the entire community. We all have been talking and collaborating all summer on how we can both improve our in-classroom instruction, but also our virtual instruction on how we can become better teachers. And the conversations that have been had just simply in this board meeting, I think kind of mirror maybe a disillusion and I apologize for that word because I just can't think of a better one in the moment. A disillusion of like what happens at school every day? Walking into a fourth grade classroom and having fourth grader six feet apart. That, or, and if you go down from fourth grade, I'm not sure that exists and how, I'm not even sure how to teach a class like that. Like I, I've been racking my brain and watching webinars all summer just to become a better teacher, to figure out how to deal with this situation. And then I listened to these board meetings and I am disheartened by the rhetoric that I hear here by, we have a whole school that cannot fit these hybrid guidelines. And Karen has spoken extensively about how the middle school cannot, can meet the hybrid guidelines, but cannot beat a full in-person opening. And then there was the idea floated about canceling buses. I am almost aghast at that even idea of like the equity of not teaching all students at the capacity that we're teaching some students. Um, I struggle with that. Equity is a big part of this and how we can continue reaching every single student in our learning community and every single parent and every single teacher and every single staff member. There are a lot of people impacted by the decisions of this board. And I'm just really not sure that the board the, the discussion that I've heard, I'm not sure that the board understands the reaching impacts of your decision-making. I'm fully in support of a hybrid open, a flexible open where we can see what happens. And then we can either loosen and go to full or we can tighten and go to remote. We need to be flexible, but starting remote is just a mistake and is just a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Anyone else out there? George, did you have anything more?
Uh, those are some great perspectives and, um, tough acts to follow. Um, I, I just, somebody did put something that, in, in the chat that, um, oh, the kids of the 504 plans, they fall through the cracks. I think that for me, that's, um, part of the, my concern is kids, you know, maybe the kids less fortunate than others. I don't know how you want to put it, but falling through. I, I'm okay with an, with a, with a hybrid opening. I, I don't, I don't mind it at all, actually personally. Um, I'm, so long as, um, we're working toward, um, getting back to some normalcy because, you know, every, every teacher out there will tell you, well, maybe not, I don't know, but kept hearing all last year that you can't beat in-person learning. And so long as we're working toward getting back to our full capacity of education, uh, I'm okay with starting slow. That's, but I don't want to get to six weeks from now and then, you know, everything is still good and health-wise and we're still, still, you know, still here doing it. So that's just my, my thoughts.
Jason Benson, you got anything you'd like to say?
Uh, yes. Yeah. I, I think that the six weeks seems like a very long time for a lot of these people and it's certainly understandable that people want to rush and it's also understandable that people want to sit back and see what's going to happen. But it, it really is a matter clearly of the SU versus us. I am fully in support of the hybrid, but I'm also in support of, let's get things going. Let's have a week of of the cautious and overly cautious and go from there. It might change completely by the time we get there. We're still a month away from anything actually happening at this point. So at this point in time, yes, I, I agree with Priscilla and Jason Terry. That's all.
So I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier about you, there are ancillary things that this, that will have to be figured out on how we're going to deal with. We can't, we're not going to be able to tell the SU to provide us buses. We're not going to be able to tell the SU that they need to feed these kids. We, you know, we're not going to be able to force the SU to provide the, the special ed staff. the, the special ed staff. We, you know, those are things that are not going to just happen like magic. Because we say we want to open two weeks. Or because we would say we want to open at a different date than the, the supervisory union. Priscilla, you have your hand up. This is your last chance.
Okay, I just wanted to comment that, yes, there's, I'm looking at the chat room too and the life skills, unless they're in life skills, life skills goes, is going to go more days than the others anyway. And so they're, they're in there. So those life skills level, but the, the higher resource level in the life, the ones that are 504s are really going to miss out in, in the other one. And buses do support the educational, but we need to find out how many parents are bringing their children to before we have buses like, like Jason pointed out earlier. And, um, you know, if, if we get to that point, we see, we let me, we'll look at the numbers, we'll see the numbers, we'll have them then because we'll have that first week. And we'll know whether we can, we can actually be really successful with this. But if we don't try, we are missing the good time of year when we can use all the outside much more than we can later. So that's one reason why I feel strongly that we should go for this. Also, we're providing a full education for those parents that would have to provide babysitting care for their children at other times and they will provide the babysitting, they would have to do that. We're not providing babysitting, we're providing an educational program and that's important. And I think that's what our teachers really truly want to do. Uh, I had a discussion earlier and most teachers are, you know, there's a couple that are not comfortable with being there at all and I understand that. Um, you know, maybe there's some other things that we can do to provide the full-time education if we vote it this way. Thanks.
Any further discussion from anyone else on the board?
Rick has something.
Jason?
So I just want to reiterate, I've been working every day since this has started. And I think, you know, at work, we have signs posted all over the place that say, do not enter this building if you have these symptoms. And a lot of that starts at home with the parents for the children. That's first. Um, and you know, I, I'm hearing the teachers and I respect your opinions. I'm hearing you guys, you know, the teacher, the three teachers that have spoken that, you know, that are concerned and nervous and scared. Um, what do you say to the, to all the taxpayers and the people like myself and George and Rick and I'm not sure if Priscilla does work and Jason Metz, I'm not sure he does work either, but we're going to work every day and you, and the teachers are saying, well, I don't want to do it. So that, that's one. And the second thing is, we're, we, as a Rockingham board, we are just saying that one shoe does not fit all. You know, that for the K through five, you know, at Central School or K through four, um, it needs to be a little bit different, different model. Middle school needs to be a little bit different model, you know? Think outside the box. Maybe we got to use, utilize a high school that has capacity for more students. That's all we're saying. We're just saying one shoe doesn't fit all. So, thank you.
So I just want to remind all the board members that I agreed to have this as an action item. This is a really slippery slope as opposed to equity amongst the schools, amongst, you know, I can't reiterate enough. I, you all seem to, you know, no one had, no one has really acknowledged the difficulties that we're going to run into with, with transportation, with food, with special ed. I, you know, I don't know how we're going to deal with that. You know, it, it just.
Well, um, I. Let's add real quick, Rick, I just want to say is that, um, I think boards understand that the task force that were put together were close to 50 people, educators, administrators, board members, custodians, maintenance, school security, you name it. I mean, this is, this recommendation was put together based on all the different task forces giving me their information, their results and based on what we can do. I understand that people want to have the buildings open, but I think people really get a look at the big picture here too in regards to, or asking employee, yes, we do have to provide the first and foremost is safety for, for students, but it's also for teachers. They themselves have young kids. We have to be cognizant of that because we're, we're, we're educators, but we're also employers too. We have to keep that in mind. And we don't know what's going to happen if we start opening the building and everyone's coming from all over the place. And I think we, you know, we do have to listen to the, they're making valid point. And that thing, we're not going to play, we're not going to, everyone's not going to be okay with anyone roll out. And we have to respect that. We'll know that if we revisit it and going on in our society gauge the level, we can stop bringing kids back or not. That's really not how it's going, regards to this whole virus.
Okay, you guys asked for this vote. Let's have it. Jason Terry, George?
Can I ask something real quick first? At, so let's say the state loosens up their restrictions, things are going well in four or five weeks. Uh, I mean, we're probably going to keep revisiting this, I would assume, right? And is, so once that social distance guideline gets wrapped up, I would assume that we'd be working toward a full in-person. Is that?
I think that's the end goal. We're always going to try to work back, work towards the, to get everyone back. Absolutely. I don't think we're ever going to become complacent with the plan we have. We always keep moving. We, we can only go as the, uh, the virus is letting us.
Um, Rick, are you willing to take questions or comments from community members?
Yes, sir. You're more than a community member, in my opinion, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Chris Hodgson, Rockingham resident, longtime watcher, first time caller in. Appreciate you taking my call and I would just want to point out that, well, there's a number of things I would say, but the one that I want to point out is that the state of Vermont has done a great job of, um, of handling this COVID crisis, probably as well as any in the state. The hybrid model that you're considering and that is being suggested by pretty much everyone in the school system is very similar to the ones that are happening across the state. And I, and I recognize the merits that have been mentioned here of thinking outside the box, but this box isn't defined at all. We don't know where the edge of the box is. So this hybrid model may very well be thinking outside the box. Um, so given the fact that Vermont has done well and that the vast majority of the districts in Vermont are considering this model, I think it's the model to go with for Rockingham. It's the model I'm going to suggest at the high school. Um, and I do not think six weeks is a long time. We'll get at the end of six weeks, have some very good information. And we'll be able to pick the right direction at the end of those six weeks, whatever that is. So as a Rockingham resident, I encourage the Rockingham School Board to go with the recommendation of the superintendent for the duration that's been described here. Uh, thank you for taking, thank you for taking my comments.
Can I say that two, at least two of the districts that I know of are going full-time, full-time. And I believe one right near us is at least going four days full-time.
Priscilla, you've had your, you've had your say, Priscilla. I'm ready to vote. Unless there's any teachers left out there that want to speak. Mr. Terry?
I vote that we, uh, redo the plan for a, uh, a full, full five days of school.
So that's not, that, is that a yes to Priscilla's motion? Priscilla's motion was directly to reopen after two weeks.
After the, on the second week, Rick. So yes, that's what he said.
It was not revisiting the plan. It was to specifically reopen.
Let me read it again. Do you want me to read it?
Please.
I move to direct the superintendent to provide in-person instruction in full time every day to students in Rockingham schools beginning the second week of school.
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
George?
No.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
And I'm going to go on record as voting no. Appointments, if any? Director's comments? I'd like to go first tonight. You all earned my resignation. I don't feel that this board has the best interest of our students, our teachers, our staff, our community at hand. I've been hanging on by a thread for the longest time, trying to get through all of this and trying to work with all of you directly. I, this is totally against what the public has asked for. It's totally against what this, this thing is asked for. Priscilla, keep your mouth shut for a minute while I'm speaking. You especially, I am very tired of your constant berating and opinions. So formally tomorrow, Mr. Pratt will.
That's inappropriate.
You know what, Priscilla? I'm a member of the community now. I don't care. Tomorrow, Mr. Pratt will have my formal resignation and I'm just so disappointed in all of you. Enjoy yourselves.
Nice job, Rick.
Okay, anybody else? Director's comments? Go ahead, anybody?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, I think that was pretty unprofessional of Rick. And I think we need to, again, think outside the box and be creative. We are not saying that, um, we're not saying hybrid for all. I think the little guys really need school full-time. Um, and I think we can do something different at the middle school. I think that's the crutch is the middle school, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I have a very hard time believing changing air filters every three months and placing hand sanitizer in school and counting on staff to manage a pandemic armed with a thermometer in an isolation room. If it's safe for two days to go to school, it's safe for five. We're in a unique situation. For all of us, can't is not an option. And that is not how we will live our life and we must refuse to show our children that we are afraid of a challenge. We already know how to close the schools, so let's open them. Furthermore, I just received my 14% tax hike for school taxes and I don't support paying 50% capacity and paying 100% of the contracts. Thank you.
Priscilla?
I think that the decisions that we're making are not based on the numbers that we may see. And that's what I, I want to, why I really wanted this to be in this direction at this time. I think if, you know, we have to look at those numbers the end of August when they come into us, when we know who's coming back to school and who's not. We need to look at the numbers that first week when they, the kids are actually there in the, every, in the two-day, half-day time that they're there. They, we can always adjust that, Rick, if we need to adjust it at that time. But to do it ahead of time, yeah, and for him to resign is not the thing to do because he does fight for our schools and he is interested in our schools. And so I, I would hope that the superintendent can talk to him and within reason realize that, you know, it's not an end-all. But there are things that the schools can do and if they can do those things and be safe, then I think we, we definitely need to do what our, our vote was telling them we want to see them doing.
All right, I'll finish up. Um, I think that was a big mistake, putting a hard line in the sand like that. Um, I don't feel it was very collaborative. Um, there's no togetherness there, no. I think it was, I think it was a mistake. I agree that I'm, you know, I've said it before, in-line, in-class is the, uh, everybody says it's the way to go, right? So I'm, I'm hearing that, I'm feeling that, but I think drawing a hard line like that in the sand was, was a mistake and, um, I'm glad Rick lasted as long as he did. Um, also, I've been wanting to tell Ms. Bukowski, I appreciate your comments last meeting. Uh, I'm a fan of unpopular opinions, so, um, thank you for that and I don't think I have anything else. So with Rick's absence, uh, our next agenda, any other agenda items for next meeting?